Tissues real quick. As soon as I get back, we're going to call the order. One moment.
Interesting. That's the first time I've ever seen a notification that it was being livestreamed. I think that's a new feature of Zoom.
Okay, so it's 2:06 PM. I'm going to call us to order at 2:06 PM. Ms. Harless, would you like to do roll call for me?
Yes, certainly. Just one moment. I'm just pulling up one thing I want to notice note or adjournment. Excuse me, not adjournment. Call to order time. Alrighty. Ms. McCardle is here. Mr. Smith. Just hold that for right now, some not being here. Mr. Hagopian.
Here.
I am here. Mr. Blankenship.
I am here.
Mr. Bowen.
Here.
Mr. Elliott. Mr. Elliott. Okay, Mr. Nikala. Mr. Nikala.
Can you guys hear me? I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ruffo.
Madam Secretary, you've progressed slightly faster than I've been able to unmute microphones. We managed to take-
Oh, okay.
So that I can complete promoting people to co-host and-
Well, I see Mr. Elliott just came in the room too, so I don't think is Mr. Smith is here though, who's the only other person I'm showing absent right now. Okay, Mr. Banner. I see you. So I got you. Mr. Duque. Does anyone see him? Yeah, I do-
Yeah, he's there.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Eklund. If y'all could help me out.
He's present. People are blowing up the comments to show they're here.
Okay, I see that. And I pulled up the comments. Ms. Eiler. I see her. Mr. Ford. Okay, Patrick Ford is here. Ms. Gabbard, I believe I saw, yes. Mr. Nana.
I'm here.
I saw Mr. Watkins. Now on to alternates. Mr. Clark. Is there, I do not see Mr. Clark, so Mr. Cowan, or is it Cohen or Cowan? I'm gonna need to learn all of these.
Cowan. Martin Cowan is here.
Thank you. Mr. Dasing. He's here. Mr. Hall. Robley. I do not see Robley. Someone can let me know if I'm wrong. Here's another name I'm gonna need some-
Hall is here. Yes, I'm here. Sorry, I wasn't unmuted.
No problem. I'm gonna need some help with this name as well. Nepo Musino.
He's present, I see.
Present. And when he gets a chance, if he can phonetically type out his name, I can get it in my notes, so I don't keep messing it up. Mr. Pankey. Okay, do not see Mr. Pankey. And here's another one that I know I'm gonna need a phonetic on multiple times. Mr. Tuniewitz.
Pankey is here. He's in-
Tuniewitz, I'm here.
And Ms. Janis Skavitch, I see her. And I have for staff, Mr. Harris. And thank you, Connor. I see that phonetic pronunciation. And if Mark could do the same for me, that will help me in the future. If he could stick a phonetic pronunciation into chat, I'd super appreciate it. So Madam Chair, who I show is absent still, is Mr. Clark and Mr. Smith.
I'm looking for Clark. Smith, I just texted and haven't heard back yet. Let me check the comments real quick. Okay, Miguel is here. Clark, come on, Clark. I don't see Clark.
All right, so those are the only two absences, and I'll keep an eye on them coming in. I will let you know.
Okay, I think at this time, we're going to switch over from roll call. Thank you very much, Ms. Harless, to public comment. And the best way to do this is to click the hand raise function, so that I can see your hand. And then I believe our esteemed Executive Director is going to help me keep track of time. So I've got participants up, and I don't see any hands raised. Anybody want to give public comment? If I'm, okay, so we've got Andrew Cordio. Hold on one moment, Mr. Cordio, while I let this populate and percolate. Costa, okay, I want to make sure it's working on my end, so that I'm not, you know, losing it. Okay, so, once you begin, if you could lower your hand, that would be great. And Mr. Harris and I will try to catch it. If you forget, no hard feelings, but the better we manage the hand raising, the faster this is gonna go. So, Mr. Cordio, thank you. You have one minute for public comment.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Chair. Thank you, everybody. I'm glad I got to be the first to speak here, and I'll keep it quick. My name is Andrew Cordio. I am the Andrew Cordio from all the paperwork you guys have been seeing and reading in the appeals. And I just want to comment, just real quick, why I'm involved in this and why I'm so proud to be the Chair. Massachusetts has suffered some lackluster leadership here in our state for a long time. I first ran for office as a Libertarian in 2017 for my City Council. And, you know, this was before the Mises Caucus even existed, and I got no help from my State Committee, unfortunately. I ran for mayor again in 2001, and again, they were just unavailable to help. And so I was just disenfranchised with the state leadership as a whole. And when the petition started to go around, I was eager to join and be a part of it. And I think we've done everything that we can to cross all our Ts and dot our Is and keep everything as above board as possible. And I'll just, I'll leave it at that, and thank you guys very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cordio. If we have any questions later, we'll send them your way. Okay, I believe next up is Jay Costa. Could you tell us your full first name, please, and take it away?
My name is Justin Costa, from Massachusetts. Thank you, Madam Chair, and the rest of the board here. Massachusetts has been going through some internal turmoil for a while now. And we have been trying to effectively increase the public awareness of Massachusetts and trying to be a better organization, even though some people decided to attack us both on what we want to do and how we want to act. And all we ever wanted to do was try to allow people to revote for a whole new board in the beginning. And they decided that petitions were acts of violence, just for that one action. So I want to say thank you all, and thank everyone else here that listened to us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Costa.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If, I hope you don't mind me interrupting, if the participants, right before they talk, I mean, after they give their name, if they could please also give their state, because I put that in the minutes.
Sure thing. Okay, so next up is Thomas Edlem. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's Thomas Edlem. And I just wanted to thank you guys. We've had a long road here. And we're here because the other side cheated. They thought they could swing the elections by swinging the vote through mass purges. And they weren't able to do that, because the way the rules are in our state constitution, once the members call a special convention, the convention's called, then it just has to be organized by the State Committee members. Seven had expressed no interest in organizing it, but two of them did, and that's why we're here. After that, they engaged in some smears of us, as the current LNC is familiar with. But we would really appreciate you to make our affiliation formal. And one thing you should know is, our goal is not to continue the war with the other group. In fact, our board made the decision on May 10th that we're going to walk away from the organizational assets and become the Massachusetts Unified Libertarian Party. So you should know that before you vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And you're from Massachusetts, correct? You're muted. Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, next up, we have Brian, whose name starts with a la- Brian Z. Brian, please tell us your last name and what state you're from.
I apologize for the last name. It is Zkrajic, except they want to boot camp. It was from now on, you should be known as Z. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Board. I greatly appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I just want to say quickly, I signed up to Lama in July of 2021. I didn't hear anything. I signed up to the Mises Caucus because of Dave Smith, and I was watching his videos, and I loved what he was saying. Almost immediately, that July, I heard from Brody Elwood, who invited me to meet up, to the Middlesex meetup, and got me right involved, whereas I was hearing nothing from the official Lama committee. We went to affiliate Middlesex County, and the committee started to introduce, you know, roadblocks. And then the code of conduct to make it easier to kick people out. That's why I signed the petition, because I was seeing those difficulties. They were putting roadblocks in. They weren't reaching out compared to the other group that was. Sorry, I just went over. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Brian. Next, I believe, is Hector Rus. I am probably mispronouncing your name, too.
No, you got it right. Thank you. Just very quickly, I wanted to give, Hector Rus from Florida, I wanted to give like an outsider's perspective on some questions here that are brought up because of the Lama issue. One of the things that had come up, in fact, was what was the responsibilities of the LNC in this matter? And essentially, if they took no action, and I think this question about, what is this? I forget the term now, but the idea that an affiliate can be essentially disaffiliated without the formal process, constructively is the term, is something that I think the LNC needs to actually address, because there's so many questions about how a non-responsive officer of the LNC or the Board can basically take no action and still end up hurting members' rights. And I think that's something that I hope this LNC can take time to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Hector. Up next, we have Ann Reed.
How do you do? Thank you for taking up this item. I appreciate it very much. I'm Ann Reed of Massachusetts. I serve on the Worcester County Libertarian affiliate. I also have been named to the Cordio Board as of the Convention of April 24th. I, I'm perhaps in a bit of a unique position, because I was not a signer of the petition you all know about. However, I commenced after the expulsion of the 47. I commenced as a sympathizer. And at the next meeting of the Lama State Committee, I advocated for their reinstatement. And I will say, I politely certainly advocated for their reinstatement. But because I did not agree that there was some kind of racism or some kind of conspiracy behind their call for a special convention, I'm- I'm sorry. Did I hear something?
Sorry, I was just indicating time. That was the minute. You can finish off, though, please.
Oh, thank you very much. I was called a racist, and that person on the committee who called me a racist got away with it. And from then on, long story short, I continued to advocate for months. And my experiences with the committee that had wrongly expelled the 47 were mostly unpleasant, dark, and unfair.
Thank you, Ann. If we have more questions, we'll ask you and the other Board members.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, up next, we have Michael Higgins.
Hey, guys. This is Michael Higgins from Florida. I joined the Libertarian Party because of some of these actions that are happening inside the LP. I saw injustice in Massachusetts. I saw 47 members get kicked. And it pissed me off, to be quite honest. So I joined the LP because I wanted to change it. And I read the Constitution. I spoke to people from Massachusetts. I read their Constitution in particular and bylaws. I saw nothing wrong that they could, in fact, petition. And the people who are claiming they're against bigotry, in fact, are the ones kicking people out for their beliefs. So I don't believe the Libertarian Party should stand by and do nothing when it comes to membership rights, and I hope you guys could have resolved this issue today.
Thank you very much. Up next is Josh Levka.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll try and keep this brief, since our time is short. We here in the Libertarian Party generally believe that we're a bottom-up organization and that the members run the organization, not the organization running the members. On December 19, 2021, members of the Lama membership submitted a petition to their Board asking for a redress and to possibly revote and hold a special convention. These 47 people who were assigned that petition were removed. This is a very egregious membership violation and a members' rights violation. This is definitely something the LNC should be taking up. Membership violations are always something that we should be protecting. And members' rights are a keystone of this party's principles. So I would highly advise all this Board, please take up this matter. Please find, please have a resolution on this, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Josh. Up next, we have Dan Garrity.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Dan Garrity. I'm from Massachusetts. I'm the Chairman of the Pioneer Valley Libertarian Party that represents Franklin, Hampshire, and Hampton Counties in Massachusetts. On behalf of the members of our affiliate, I wanted to voice support for the Cordio Board and ask that the members of the LNC take up this issue and recognize the Cordio Board as the one and only true affiliate to the Libertarian Party out of Massachusetts. We had one fell swoop of 47 members wrongfully expelled that violated the Constitution and the bylaws. And we would ask you to take up this, because there is no place for leadership that would disenfranchise members and usurp members' voting rights in this party. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have Paul Lynch.
Thank you very much. I would just like to keep this short. I am Paul Lynch from Massachusetts, of the Worcester affiliate of the Lama. And my little tidbit that I just want to point out is, on January 10th, that meeting that was held closed was not presented with any agenda. There was no vote to close the meeting. I was one of the lucky ones that got in, because I happened to be Janelle Holmes' boyfriend. They thought I was her, so they let me in. And immediately, like, is this Janelle? Is this Janelle? And I said, no, this is Paul. And they said, well, Chris Crawford specifically said, well, this is a closed meeting. I asked why, and she told me, closed means closed. And that was the end of the conversation. There was, again, there was no vote to close the meeting. Traditionally, the meeting was always open to everyone to come. And there was no agenda. And no explanation given. We were never even given notification. So I could go on and spout this forever, but I'll keep this, like I said, brief. But no notification was given, and at this point, some people were never even given a response. So, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. I believe up next, we have Jonathan Jacobs.
Madam Chairman, thank you. I think most of you know me, and I think most of you know why I'm here. But I did want to say that, for the record, I have agreed to provide advice to the Cordio Group on this particular matter. I believe an opinion has been submitted, along with the proposed motion. And I will be willing to answer any questions about it, should there be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Up next, it looks like we have George Phillies.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Oh, good. I am George Phillies, longtime State Chair and Treasurer of the Libertarian Association of Massachusetts. I have some slightly different points. First, in the sense of most of the Union, Massachusetts does not have ballot access for party organizations. The only way you get on the ballot, with one exotic exception, is to collect signatures on nominating papers. Second, with respect to who should we recognize, I believe we're sort of in the position of noting that the National Convention did make a decision on this implicitly. Third, with respect to state party bylaws, as the fellow who substantially rewrote them, I would maintain that expelling the set of members, while perhaps ill-advised, was in accordance with the bylaws as understood and written. I should remind people that Massachusetts, at all points, uses Francis and Francis, not Roberts, for making decisions. And Francis and Francis is much freer on what you do. Finally, I would suggest that there is, with respect to who you say is the state association, its association party is different. You might consider simply pointing at the bylaws and not saying anything as to who you think is the official group here.
Thank you, Mr. Phillies. If we, I believe you reached time, but if you'll stay on the call if we have other questions, I'd like to call on you, if that's okay. Okay, I believe up next, we have Nolan. Is it Pelletier or Pelletier?
Either is fine.
Thank you.
Nolan Pelletier, Chair, LPNH. I just want to state that New Hampshire states loyalties lie with the Cordio Board as a fellow person who was subjected to a mass purge. Via Joliet Jarvis, we sympathize with Massachusetts, and we urge you to make the official judgment that the Cordio Board is the true board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It looks like that is the last hand that was raised for public comment. So we actually got through that really quickly. Thank you, guys. Now, if we want, I can take time to hear from LNC members, sort of like our own public comment, or we can jump straight into the bone. What would you prefer? Rich, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Point of interest, would it be in order to make the motion now of the resolution that I provided to the business list earlier today? Get it into the record and then begin discussion after that? If that is in order, then I would make that motion at this time.
That is in order. So that's been moved.
Second.
Let's go ahead and move to discussion and-
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I do believe that because there's people who are just listening, perhaps that the motion would need to be read aloud. I do have the language of it. I don't mind reading it aloud if Mr. Bowen would prefer not to.
I was just gonna ask him if he wouldn't mind reading it out loud for everyone.
But there is one thing before, because I kind of thought it was sort of like that quasi-public comment for LNC members. I did want to say here what I did say at the post-convention meeting, just in case anyone was curious, because it was pretty common knowledge that prior to the adjournment of the Convention, I was the parliamentarian for the Cordio Group. But I just want to, on the record, that I resigned that position. I no longer represent them. That representation has been taken over by Jonathan Jacobs.
Thank you. I did suggest that maybe we have LNC-style public comment. But Mr. Bowen raised his hand, and so I, you know, I went with that first. But I think that we're at discussion right now, so if anybody has anything on discussion, I think it's totally, it's time for us to hear that. So Donovan, did you have, did you have something to add?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, members, I've been following this closely. And while I entirely agree that our course of action should be to instate or to recognize the Cordio Board as the rightful Board, as was also concluded by the Judicial Committee in their opinions when this matter was taken to them, I feel that this means is actually improper. If we are to have any continuity of the party whatsoever, the decisions of the Judicial Committee, when they are placed upon a resolution that's before this body, have to be honored. And this is essentially the exact same motion that was done by the previous Board and that was ruled as out of order, and that ruling was sustained by the Judicial Committee. Therefore, I consider that unlike a matter that can be reinstated by session, this has already been deemed out of order by the Judicial Committee and therefore improper for us to actually bring up again as a matter of business. I think there are two more legitimate mechanisms for us to continue. Either we allow Mr. Cordio's second petition to occur on the JC and allow them to rule on whatever this constructive disaffiliation is. And this is an unfortunate byproduct about the fact that our bylaws desperately need revision in this matter. Our bylaws really make it hard for these types of matters to be resolved. Either we take that mechanism and allow them to rule on it, or we use the power that everybody has agreed to, that is in the LNC's purview, to disaffiliate the Graham Group, which is the currently recognized group, and then immediately take and act and instate the Cordio Group based on their petition to be the legitimate affiliate. I believe that those mechanisms are mechanisms that preserve the continuity of our organization and accomplish the goals that we wish to accomplish. Thank you.
Here, here.
I have a point of order, Madam Chair.
Okay, so I want to hear your point of order, and then before we do anything else, I would like Mr. Bowen to read his motion, because we're-
That was my, that was my point of order, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll do that now. This is a resolution to recognize the rightful State Committee of the Libertarian Association of Massachusetts. Whereas on December 19th, 2021, Lama membership submitted a petition for a special convention to conduct a recall election of the Lama State Committee. Whereas the petition contained greater than the 10% of valid member signatures required for a special convention, in accordance with Article 2, Section 5 of the Lama Constitution, which reads, "If 10% or 500, whichever is less, of the current dues-paying membership signs a petition requesting a special state convention and mails or presents the petition papers to the State Committee, the State Committee must organize a state convention to be held between 30 and 60 days of the date of delivery of the petition to the State Committee." Whereas the petition was submitted with an agenda, as required by the following constitutional provision, which reads, "The petition shall specify the agenda of the special state convention, and the State Committee may, by majority vote, append items to the end of that agenda, but may not otherwise change the agenda." Whereas the action of January 10 to remove members violates- to remove members violated Article 2, Section 2 of the Constitution, which reads, "Persons who are members of this organization whose dues are current and who join the organization at least 30 days prior to the date of the state convention are eligible to vote and participate in the business meeting at the state convention. Persons who were dues-paying members of the organization or members of the National Libertarian Party within the past three years, including a period of at least 90 days before the state, the day of the state convention, but whose organization dues are not current, may join or rejoin this organization at the state convention by paying their yearly dues. They may then vote and participate in the business meeting at the state convention. Whereas on January 10, 2022, the response from the State Committee to the properly constituted petition was to expel en masse all petition signatories in violation of basic member rights, due process, and Article 1, Section 3 of the Lama bylaws, which allow for expulsion of a person from membership, not mass expulsions. It reads as, "The State Committee may, for cause, by two-thirds secret ballot vote of the entire State Committee, expel a person from membership in the Libertarian Association of Massachusetts. An expelled person must receive a two-thirds secret ballot favorable vote from the State Committee to rejoin." Whereas the vote to expel Lama members was taken during a supposed State Committee meeting that had no agenda, thus denying targeted members notice of any proposed action against them and an opportunity to defend themselves. And the meeting was called to order in closed session against longstanding custom. Their parliamentary authority does not address the topic at all, and contrary to the public notice given. Whereas, among the wrongfully expelled were two State Committee members who were denied any access to due process in violation of Article 4, Section 10 of the Lama Constitution, which read, "The State Committee may, by two-thirds vote of its entire membership, expel a person from the State Committee for cause after affording the accused reasonable access to due process." Whereas, a member of that State Committee who has not been a resident of Massachusetts for close to a year casts their vote for the expulsion in violation of Article 4, Section 8, and Article 1, Section 1 of the Lama Constitution, which reads, "To be elected or serve as a member or officer of the State Committee, a person must be a member of the organization whose dues are current, and members are all dues-paying members in Massachusetts and all other persons who may so qualify under uniform rules of non-due paying membership for which the State Committee may provide in its bylaws." Whereas, two duly-elected members of the 2021 Lama State Committee did organize and conduct the special convention as is required by Article 2, Section 5 of the Lama Constitution, and provided notice, to the extent possible, given deliberate obstructive actions and omissions by former State Committee members. Whereas, a new State Committee was elected at that special convention on February 26th, 2022, in accordance with the Lama bylaws, Article 2, and the Lama Constitution, Article 2, and as specified on the submitted agenda, with the positions now filled as follows. Andrew Cordial, Chair. Charlie Larkin, Treasurer and Archivist. Scott Gray, Recording Secretary. Jason Brand, Membership Director. Janelle Holmes, Political Director. David Burnham, Operations Director. Thomas Edlam, Communications Director. Brody Elwood, Technology Director. Daniel Garrity, Fundraising Director. Whereas, the State Committee elected at the special convention set and noticed their annual convention for April 24, 2022, at which time the State Committee for the 2022-2023 term were selected and National Convention delegates were also selected. Whereas, the Credentials Committee report included the Massachusetts delegates elected at the April 24, 2022 Regular Convention, which report was accepted by the 2022 Libertarian Party National Convention. Whereas, a new Region 8 agreement was finalized and forwarded to the Region 8 representatives in which the other states in the region unanimously signed the agreement to include the Cordial Board elected at their convention on April 24, 2022. Be it therefore resolved that the Libertarian National Committee recognizes the results of the election at the special convention, the State Committee elected therein, the results of the April 24, 2022 Lama Regular Convention, and the State Committee elected therein.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Bowen. Could someone on the LNC please drop a link to this motion in the chat so that people following along can see it? I know it's, it's out there on the internet, but I want to make sure that people see it timely. And then on that note, uh, we should recognize Ms. Harlowe, because she has her hand raised.
Okay, yes, I'm going to stick the link to OneNote in the chat. The full motion is in, in a tab on OneNote. And, um, I'm sure I'll have my hands raised multiple times in this, but I'd like to address some of the issues that were raised by Mr. Pankey before. If we are going to talk about continuity, we need to face the elephant in the room, that the JC issued two absolutely contradictory opinions within two months of each other. I think we've already thrown continuity out the window. There is absolutely no rationale for how the Delaware situation, where it was determined in order that the LNC should have recognized the rightful board, was in order, and then the Massachusetts one was not. What seems apparent to me that happened is that the losing side of the Judicial Committee found a way to now be the winning side on another one. And I do think that did tremendous harm to our organization. But as all of that Judicial Committee had told us, we do not have a rule of precedent. Precedent is persuasive, it is not binding. That also is true in Roberts' Rules of Order. The fact that a prior chair ruled a motion out of order is interesting. It might be persuasive, but it is not at all what we would consider precedent like we do in a court of law. This is a brand-new LNC and a brand-new chair, and I respectfully submit, as did a good deal of the past LNC, that Ms. Bill U was just entirely incorrect in that. I'm not claiming any kind of bad faith, I just disagree. The fact is, there was a lawful change of leadership of this board. It is not a violation of an affiliate's autonomy to recognize a lawful change of leadership. We do it every single year, there is an annual convention. Unless this board is going to start saying, well, we're not allowed to recognize annual conventions, it is absolutely incoherent to say we're not going to recognize special conventions that are allowed under the governing documents of the organization. And here is something that a lot of people need to come to terms with. Our choice here is not between the Graham Board and the Cordial Board. Our choice here is between the Cordial Board and no board, because those expulsions were absolutely unlawful and invalid. And it was 47 people, 47 votes would have made a difference in the convention that was allegedly held by the Graham Board. When you hold a convention that violates voting rights to the extent that the results could have been affected, all of the elections held at that convention are null and void. I think last convention, we became, at our own national convention, we became very familiar with the concept of null and void when it came to my removal. Therefore, if there was an allegedly, and a board elected at the Graham Convention, they're not a legitimately elected board. So if you're going to say that the Cordial Board is not the legitimate board, then we have no board in Massachusetts and therefore have no affiliate. The recognizing the Graham Board is not even an option here. And some people have some serious dealing with it to do when it comes to that. I keep hearing the Democratic Rules of Order being brought up. I submit that as a red herring. I know that perhaps the intent was to make the Democratic Rules of Order the governing authority where the Constitution and bylaws are silent throughout everything in the Massachusetts Party, but it was not written that way, unfortunately, for whoever intended that. It is written that it only governs State Committee meetings, which means that it does not govern offenses that allegedly occurred outside a State Committee, which is what those expulsions were allegedly based on, which means it then defaults to general parliamentary law. Guess which best encapsulates general parliamentary law? Roberts' Rules of Order. I'm sorry if that's an oopsie, but that is in fact reality. But if we want to default to general, to, uh, the Democratic Rules of Order, the parliamentary opinion that was submitted to us earlier today shows that the rights granted to members under the Democratic Rules of Order is in fact quite broad. Um, I don't know if I froze up here, my screen seems to have frozen.
Your screen is frozen, I can still hear you.
Okay, perfect, as long as you guys can still hear me.
Yeah, let's, let's try to wrap this one up soon though, so that we can hear from other people. And I do want to loop in their current parliamentarian.
I, I, I do, but I want to, there was a lot addressed. And sometimes you can throw an argument that takes two seconds to make and five minutes to refute. And, um, under Roberts, I'm not going to take 10 minutes, but I do have a member right to speak for 10 minutes. Um, I'll make it as quick as possible. Um, and disaffiliation, no, is not the right option here, because that would recognize there is a Graham Board. And parliamentary-wise, I'm sorry, there is no question, the Graham Board does not exist. It is not an option. Um, further, all that has happened is there was a legitimate election by members as allowed under their constitution, and the prior board simply refused to yield their seats. We would never, ever tolerate this at an annual convention. We should never, ever tolerate this here. The fact that 47 members were purged simply for signing a petition. In my study of the history of this party, which isn't 100%, but it's pretty decent, it's one of the worst egregious tyrannical acts I have ever seen, including being worse than what happened in my removal. And for me to say that should carry some weight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, the next person with their hand up is Kathy Niskavich. I want to be mindful that there are a couple of, uh, people, people who are party to this action, for lack of a better term on the call, who would like to speak. So I'm going to go ahead and, and call on Kathy, but at any point, if any of our members, our LNC members would like to call on JJ or George Phillies, I think we should probably do that just to be polite, because I believe that JJ's time is short.
I just have a quick comment, going back to the appropriateness of the LNC hearing this resolution. Since the JC opinion, there is new facts in this matter, and that would be that the convention, the delegates at convention, recognize the Cordial Board. And, um, therefore, it's appropriate to consider that in revisiting this resolution.
Thank you very much for making that point. Uh, next up is Dave Better.
Uh, yes, Madam Chair. So, um, given the arguments that have occurred already on this issue on both sides, Ms. Harlowe, Mr. Pankey, et cetera. Um, I know this issue came up in the last LNC session, but I think you were actually going where I was going to go. So I was going to ask you if you would allow our current party parliamentarian, Richard Brown, to speak his opinion as to whether it would be in order to take up this resolution as written in this session, given everything that's been said about it so far.
Absolutely. Um, if, if he'd like to speak, I'd be happy to hear from him. And I will say really quickly, on a point of personal privilege, I have a stuffy nose. I am not frowning at anyone, I'm just, um, it's a thing. But anyway, go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Mr. Bennett, it, it is my opinion that this motion is in order at this time.
Why?
The, it, it, it just is, and I, and I don't believe the Judicial Committee declared that it's not in order, but even if they did, uh, um,
You're breaking up a little.
This has already been pointed out. That opinion is not, that, that opinion is not binding. And if I'm breaking up, uh, Madam Chair, I can, can log back in with a different connection to try to do better next time.
You're back. Um, okay, so I believe next up is Pat Ford. Mr. Ford, if you'd like to speak, go right ahead.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Uh, first of all, I rise in support of Mr. Bowen's resolution, and if it is at this time appropriate, I second it. Madam Chair, from the moment I was elected as a replacement for the Region 8 alternate in the wake of Tucker Colburn's de-resignation because of the New Hampshire matter, I have been boots on the ground in every state in Region 8. And I want to briefly afford a historical perspective from the then LNC. The behavior of the former Libertarian Association of Massachusetts is similar to what you've had to witness in states like Delaware, New Hampshire, and Vermont. Bad actors willing to engage in the type of behavior they often accuse their opponents, rationalizing authoritarian acts exhibiting a willingness to burn the libertarian village in order to save it, in this case for themselves. I have watched these bad actors routinely engage in acts that are diametrically opposed to virtually every standard of the libertarian philosophy. A complete disregard of membership rights, hijacking due process, firing members in order to maintain control. The behavior of the Purge Party in Massachusetts is particularly nefarious. In properly-nosed meetings led by an illegal chair, mischaracterizing a legal position, petition, excuse me, as an act of aggression, blocking entry by active LNC members to a Zoom-based organizational meeting. A toxic environment created by former Lama leadership, making effective whistleblowing difficult, and I found out not impossible. Inviting a Republican candidate for the United States Senate in New Hampshire, an opponent of a duly-adored Libertarian Party candidate of New Hampshire, to be the keynote speaker at their convention. Meanwhile, the legitimate Libertarian Association of Massachusetts has operated as a thoroughly transparent manner, engaged in the high, the successful election of a libertarian, is actively moving forward in a highly positive direction in both activism and the support of candidacies. The current Libertarian National Committee has the opportunity to right an historic wrong. The previous LNC refused to discuss these matters, conflating, weighing in on a moral level, weighing in with an opinion as active engagement in the internal affairs of a libertarian affiliate. I would argue that now, given the passage of the convention, and at the same time, willing to observe a higher moral plane, it is time for us to make our feelings known and duly authorized. We, what is often referred to as the legitimate Libertarian Association of Massachusetts, as in fact the current operating body, the current operating representative of the libertarian philosophy in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Um, Jonathan Jacobs mentioned a while ago in the chat that he would like to speak. I don't have his hand raised. Uh, I recognize he's short on time, so if everyone is okay with, with that, can we hear from Mr. Jacobs?
Um, thank you, Madam Chairman. I just wanted to add something since this has come up. Uh, points of order, can everybody hear me, I guess? Uh, points of order can be made at subsequent sessions, which is what you would have. Even had the election not gone this way, a point of order on, you know, or the convention not gone this way, and there'd be different people elected, uh, the point of order could still be raised and still be legitimately in order. Uh, I have said this in, not only now, but in an actual publication about 10 years ago. Uh, and I'll be happy to send the person who was asking about it, a copy of it, if they will send me an email address. Um, I would also, uh, it was, I'll add, it was in a peer-reviewed journal, so this is something that is probably pretty solid. I will also add that the point of order, that the, uh, motion is substantially different as this particular version claims that there is a violation of the constitute, of the, uh, Lama Constitution and of their parliamentary authority. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe up next we have Mr. Hagopian.
Um, what is Dustin in front of me, sorry?
Oh. Dustin, you're using that pale white person hand? I'm so sorry, I didn't see it. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Um, so just a, a question for clarification. I'm not sure if it was brought up or not, but I didn't. I'm not sure if it was brought up or not, but I didn't hear it. The 47 members that were expelled, I was told they were reinstated. Is that true or is that just something I heard?
Okay, that's a good question. To my knowledge, it's not true. But JJ, can you speak to that? Or, or Andrew Cordio, whoever's on?
I think that should be directed to Mr. Cordio. I will be leaving the meeting. I will try to return after my other previously scheduled meeting is over.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cordio, if you're on the call, Mr. Harris will find you and try to unmute you, and then you can let us know whether or not any of you are reinstated.
Uh, can you guys hear me? Hello?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Yeah, as, as far as I know, they voted to, they voted to reinstate us at their convention on the 23rd, but it failed. So we have not been reinstated.
I'm seeing conflicting answers in the chat, so I'm not sure. I'm going to get a clear answer on it, but thank you.
Okay, that's, that's good to know. Thank you. So what we're going to do right now is we're going to go back to Todd, and then we're going to go through in order. And at some point, I would like to call on Mr. Phillies as well.
Okay, I'll wrap mine up quickly. First of all, it's my understanding that the JC appeal was on the appeal of the chair and not necessarily this issue. And that was the respondent's case that they made to the JC. So that's one important thing to point out. The second issue is that the JC ruled three to three with at least one of the dissenters' point of view based solely on the six-month rule, which is a condition that no longer exists. Therefore, I think it is wholly inappropriate for anybody to use the previous JC ruling as a basis for a vote today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe Ms. Harlow is up. Whenever you're ready, Ms. Harlow. Can you unmute pretty please? Okay, she looks like she might be frozen. I don't think I'm frozen, right? Everybody else is still moving around. I can see myself. So let's, um, let's jump over to Mr. Thrasher, and then we're going to come right back to Karen and Harlow. I'm sorry about that, Karen and.
I'm ready now. I'm sorry. My, my computer is weird right now.
Okay, no worries. Go right ahead.
And this, again, will be brief and only address new things. As far as whether or not this is in order, I appreciate Mr. Brown's opinion. Note, he's a registered parliamentarian. I'm a registered parliamentarian. I also believe this is in order. Mr. Jonathan Jacobs is a professional registered parliamentarian, says it's in order. Alicia Matson, who was on the JC, is a professional registered parliamentarian. It's in order. If you read her opinion, she goes into great depth to answer the question, why? It is in order. She did so both in the Delaware opinion and in the prior Massachusetts opinion. As to the question of reinstatement, I think the reason why there's conflicting answers is because you're dealing with a board that doesn't exist. A board that doesn't exist cannot reinstate anybody. But what they claimed that they did was rescind the prior expulsions. For one thing, you can't rescind expulsions. That is one of the items that is impossible to be rescinded. But let's just not nitpick with words and say that that was an attempted reinstatement. They made it clear that they allegedly reinstated just so that they could start expelling people one person at a time. It was not some good faith attempt in order to cure a past wrong. But that board doesn't exist because if they're admitting that they wrongfully expelled those people, that means that those people were wrongfully denied a vote at their convention, which would have affected the results. Therefore, they just proved their own non-existence. Lastly, I would highly encourage, even though it's dicta because it wasn't the question on the table, Ms. Matson, in her Massachusetts opinion, went to great lengths to show how the Cordial Board is the valid board. And in fact, ended with the sentence, there is absolutely no question that Andrew Cordio is the legitimate chair of the Libertarian Association of Massachusetts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Thrasher, you're up next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will point out, Ms. Harlow is incorrect. Francis and Francis has no provision prohibiting the recension of expulsions. The board did indeed vote to rescind the expulsions of the individuals who were, who were expelled from the party and also for those who were all members of Lama. At the time of the expulsions, there were two individuals who signed up, were not Lama members. Now, Madam Chair, although I am a member of the Graham Board elected at the Lama State Convention on April 23rd, 2022, I am rising here as an individual party member. I did not, I do not, and I would not support the expulsion of membership. However, as Mr. Phillies has correctly pointed out, the actions of the former Lama Board, however egregious, were taken in accordance with the bylaws and constitution of Libertarian Association of Massachusetts. Furthermore, I will say that it is certainly within the purview of this committee to choose with whom or what organization the committee wishes to affiliate with. However, respectfully, the Libertarian National Committee has absolutely no jurisdiction to say to Lama that it must accept results of any convention. It, it, there is, there's simply no jurisdiction that the LNC has to, to state that, that Lama must, you know, must recognize a certain board or, you know, there's, there's just, there's no obligation, Lama has no obligation to recognize anyone chosen by, by the LNC as its committee. Libertarian Association of Massachusetts is a legal entity and organization within the state of Massachusetts governed by the laws of the state of Massachusetts. Finally, Madam Chair, at this point, I do have a question to pose to you. I am curious, Ms. Harlow has indicated and, and made very, made publicly, what people publicly aware that she was previously employed or at least retained by the Cordial Board as a parliamentarian to argue in their favor during these, during these, these, these questions here. My question to you, Madam Chair, and to Ms. Harlow is, does Ms. Harlow's plan to recuse herself from her vote, from a vote on this particular action, as she has very clearly indicated that she was in the employ of one of the factions that are a party to this dispute?
Um, thank you for asking. I appreciate your question, but I don't actually know. I think that question is probably better directed at Ms. Harlow, not me, because I don't know what her thoughts are, and I shouldn't speak for her.
Um, I would be more than glad to answer the question. I do not believe that is required. We operate under Roberts Rules of Order. Roberts Rules of Order does not require recusal in any circumstance. My opinion on this would have remained the same whether I represented them or not. It is not required that members who come into a meeting not have an opinion. I do also want to be clear, when we talk about the word employ, that is very vague in the circumstance. I was paid absolutely zero money. I do not charge libertarians. I probably, I volunteered hundreds of hours and would do so again. But no, I feel absolutely zero obligation to recuse myself from an opinion I would have had independently of any representation of them. I saw underdogs. I had skills. I gave it to them. And I have fully disclosed my past involvement, which is all our policy manual requires. And, um, you know, all that Roberts Rules of Order requires.
Thank you, Ms. Harlow. I believe up next we have Joshua Smith, who has not spoken yet. And then I see Thomas Edlam has his hand raised. We will circle back to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to apologize to you guys. We are on like the last 400 miles of our road trip from the convention. And so I have all my kids in the car and lost track of time zones. But I do, I, I will kind of want to reiterate what, what our wonderful secretary just said about the, the lack of, of a legitimate board in, in Massachusetts and their reinstating members. If this board is to find that there, them removing members was out of order. If we're to find that the petition was in order, that the special election was in order, then they have no right to reinstate or remove members because they aren't the illegitimate board as, as seen by this, this board here and, and affiliated with us. So that, that doesn't matter, even if it did happen or didn't happen. The, the question is, is irrelevant to the point. But, but also importantly, to Mr. Thrasher's point, that we don't, we can't tell Lama who to receive as members. That's also true. But what is also true is we can remove support from the illegitimate board. And we can recognize who we affiliate with as a national party in Massachusetts. And we should do that because what's happened to the 47 in Mass was wrong. We know it was wrong. We can, we can argue all day about whether it was constitutionally correct or not. But if you read the constitution from Lama, it's very clear that their, that their convention, their special convention was in order and the petition was in order. So I think it's an open and shut case. It should have been with the first LNC that took this in, and it should have been with the JC, and now we have a, a chance to make it right. So I hope this board will, will make it right. I'm definitely in favor of this motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. I want to circle back to Mr. Edlam to hear from him since he is on, since he is a member of one of the affiliates, and then we're going to go to Mr. Pankey. It might take us just a second to find you and unmute you, but we're.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I'm just going to reiterate some of the comments I made in the, in the chat. I want to first say that this is recognized of any election that any affiliate would have. I mean, the fact that the LNC, the past LNC did not recognize us as the proper affiliate is derelict on their duty, but it's incumbent upon this new LNC to recognize the proper elections. And then secondly, look very carefully to what Thrasher has just said. Their view, their entire board's view, even the non-purgers, is they're empowered, they feel empowered to expel any number of members or even all of the members without a due process, without any votes and in order to, to maintain their offices. And that's their position going forward. Now, I've personally been told by one member that they don't want me in the Libertarian Party ever. I haven't done anything wrong. I, I, I'm a regular libertarian writer. I write for Libertarian Institute. I write for Fee. I write, I mean, I'm not, I, I'm not a nobody. I'm not a big shot, but I, I belong in the Libertarian Party, and I'd like to vote to keep, recognize our board so that I can stay in the Libertarian Party. And that's what all the Mass 47 wants. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's move now to Mr. Pankey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to make sure that we're not talking past each other here. I fully support recognizing the Cordial Committee. I fully support the, the decision that Ms. Madison gave on the JC. And I would also like to note that Dr. Moulton also fully agreed with the analysis and the conclusions that Ms. Madison gave with respect to how the, the, the matter was raised, whether or not what they did was proper. There is very little objection to this as far as the consideration of the facts at hand on Massachusetts. What was remaining was how this interacts with the national committee's bylaws, how, and how it reacts to its, you know, orders of operation, rules and parliamentary authority. I fully understand, and, and this is the reason why I said, I did not say we are not allowed to have a second vote on this. I understand that precedence is not binding on the JC and that continuity should be something that we desire, not something that is forced upon us. Now, we've recently had an election. This is a brand new board. We have a mechanism that is disaffiliation. It can say in that same resolution that we disaffiliate, even though we don't believe that the existing board is legitimate. We can make that statement. That statement's a more powerful statement because it requires a three-fourths majority of this board. I'm fully confident, we have three-quarters of the majority of this board that believe that this action is inappropriate. And that they should be not, they should be repudiated entirely from having made this decision. And I believe that a motion such as one to disaffiliate not only deals with any possible inconsistency in our bylaws in a correct way, nobody can, it's, it, nobody can refudiate it, repudiate it whatsoever. Nobody can refute it. And it also gives us a stronger reaction to what had been done by the previous Lama Board. So I'm simply suggesting that we take a stronger, more forceful action to, with this than the current motion that is at play that also stands up to any potential further JC review better than the alternative that's being placed upon us. Thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Pankey. We're going to go back to Ms. Harlow.
Okay, my mute button worked here. Want to address something in comments because I hope we're not going to start going down some of the ugly roads that happened last term. It was brought up in comments that I am governed by the Code of Professional Responsibility of parliamentarians. That is absolutely correct. And I am currently abiding by every single provision of that code. My clients, prior to my withdrawing representation, knew I was running for an LNC position, gave full consent. I found another parliamentarian for them. I have to say, we, we should not be insinuating defamatory comments in chat. I have abided by every single one of my professional responsibilities, and I ask for that to stop. Now, to talk about whether or not our bylaws allow us to do what we're doing, yes, there has been a disagreement between Mr. Moulton and Ms. Matson. However, Ms. Matson was, made the same exact argument that was on the prevailing side in Delaware. When there are differing, potentially differing interpretations of bylaws, it is the interpretation that doesn't render the rest of the bylaws absurd that is the correct interpretation. If it is claimed that we are not allowed to determine who a rightful chair is, it renders our obligations to the affiliates, which require us interfacing with the chair, to be absolutely absurd. I respectfully disagree with Mr. Pankey, who says we can disaffiliate and say, yeah, but we're disaffiliating someone we don't believe is real. That is incoherent. That would make it absolutely ripe for our decision to be overturned. Like it's, it's like saying if you really did believe birds weren't real, but then you know you were going to go bird hunting for Birdmeat. It makes absolutely no sense. You can only disaffiliate someone you believe is an affiliate. They, is no legitimate board there. Again, our option is the Cordial Board, or we have no affiliate in Massachusetts.
Thank you, Ms. Harlow. So, okay, let's go to Connor Napo.
Yes, I have a request for information, actually. Whichever organization is the legitimate affiliate in Massachusetts is, uh, did they previously have a CRM and website provided by LP National?
Um, we need to have someone answer that. Mr. Cordio, are you on the call?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Connor, can you ask your question again?
Yes. Did, did the Libertarian Affiliation of Massachusetts or Association of Massachusetts have a LP National-provided CRM or website?
Do they have one? The Libertarian, like the the, our current one, um, I would probably can I defer that to my tech guy, Brody Elwood?
Yes, you may.
Let's do that, and then we're going to hear from Mr. Thrasher as well.
While we're getting that answer, I'm bringing this up because, I mean, if if national resources are being used for whichever um, association comes out of this is we have a fiduciary responsibility to ensure our resources are being used by the appropriate actors. So I think it's absolutely critical and in order that we sort this matter out.
Uh, yeah, so I do believe that they currently use the national CRM and uh, website services. If I remember correctly, sometime last summer, they voted to move to the national services. And reviewing the minutes from the last state committee meeting of the Graham Board, uh, they had discussions of moving to alternative services.
Thank you for answering that. Yes, so I I think it's incredibly, so to be clear, the uh, Cordial Party or Cordial Board does not have access to a national CRM or website system that was previously provided.
Okay, uh, I believe Mr. Thrasher had his hand raised, but I also want to ask what the status of CRM is with your Lama affiliate.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, the the correct answer is no. The Lama has not utilized the national CRM nor the CRM website. That is an incorrect statement. Um, I do believe, although I have not seen it myself as a membership as as the membership director, I do believe that the usual data dump, uh, as far as uh, member, national members did occur uh, previous to the convention. Uh, however, I I honestly do not know the last time such a data dump occurred. That occurs with every single affiliate. Uh, but again, there, the Lama has not used uh, the CRM nor the website services. Um, I did have an additional comment in response to Ms. Harlow's and uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Edlem. However, I will, uh, if if it is appropriate, I'll step back and let things continue.
You can go ahead and give your comment.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, so so very briefly in response to Mr. Edlem, uh, who frankly, I have grown to have a great deal of respect for over uh, through our interactions over the last uh, last few months, despite being possibly on opposite sides here. Um, I would like to say that I respectfully disagree with the characterization when it comes to uh, the idea of continued expulsions as all uh, members of the Libertarian Party are. Uh, we are individuals and all hold uh, in some cases, very diverse opinions, especially when it comes to the appropriateness of expulsions. Uh, so to characterize the entire board, uh, the entire Graham Board is having uh, such uh, such inclinations, even that to the best of my knowledge, even saying the majority of such board of the board has that inclination, I would, I would uh, I would say is incorrect. Uh, beyond that, I I would like to say I am unfortunately disappointed in Mrs. Ms. Harlow's uh, Ms. Harlow's response to my inquiry um, with someone who has railed against corruption so much. It's very disheartening to see her, to see her take that, take that position, and I'll we yield. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Crasher, Thrasher. Uh, Ms. Reed has her hand up, and she is a a member of an affiliate, so I think it's appropriate that we go ahead and hear.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, this is just maybe a technical item. If I if I heard uh, the reading of the Cordial Board correctly when Mr. Bowen read the motion, I don't, um, I don't know if you need, if you wish to have the lineup of the April twenty fourth convention or the previous special convention lineup there, because there has been a very slight personnel change. Um, the the special uh, convention of in February had included um, Charlie Larkin, who did not seek reelection at the April convention. Um, and and I, I guess you could say I I was elected to that seat or the vacancy. Um, so I didn't know if an amendment was needed in terms of uh, context. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that takes care of almost all the hands. We've got Scott Gray. Mr. Gray, are you a member of either affiliate? Sorry, we're just waiting to have you unmuted.
Hi, I'm Scott Gray. I'm the Secretary for Lama uh, uh, for uh, uh, the Cordial Board, as it's called, uh, elected at the special convention on the twenty sixth and reelected and elected to that position after the convention on April twenty fourth.
Okay, great. Did you have any additional insight to add to this discussion on anything?
I I want to be very clear. Yes, uh, yes, I do. Sorry.
Go go right ahead. We'd love to hear from you.
Thank you, Angela. So I I want to, I want to confirm our understanding of the situation is in line with what Karen N. described, but I I want to, I want to put it in in terms from the view of of a person who's been acting directly as recording secretary of of uh, what we see as the continuation of Lama. When I want people to understand, the Cordial Board, uh, who recently voted, they're going to be doing business as shortly as the Unified Libertarians in Massachusetts. That might make it easier to distinguish us, but the Cordial Board is the Lama Board. It is the legal continuation of Lama. What happened, what actually happened was that, and was that under the bylaws and constitution of an existing organization, Lama, a um, a special convention was duly called, duly called, elections were held, a new state committee was elected. The fact, the fact that the uh, officers who were voted out refused to recognize that they were voted out and continue to hold a rope rump convention on April twenty third does not change the fact that they are, that they are not the continuation of Lama. They are effectively a new group that has stolen the name Lama and the resources of Lama. You cannot disaffiliate a group which was never affiliated. The false rump Lama under Graham was never an affiliate of the LP. We are the legitimate continuation of the of of the affiliate of the LP under Andrew Cordio. And we cannot, it 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 would be, I'll be honest, it'd be an insult to our group to uh, to disaffiliate the group that, the group, that is us. What's what's asked here, what we really hope to see to rectify this is the, is for the National Committee to recognize that we are the continuation of Lama, not that, uh, and not to disaffiliate Lama.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Gray. So I'm going to pause this real quick. We've been chatting for about an hour. LNC, how are, how are we feeling? Do we want to keep discussing this? We've got Mr. Thrasher's hand raised. Uh, no disrespect, we've heard from him a couple of times. If we want to keep asking questions, that's fine. Um, Mr. Bowen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to answer Ms. Reed's uh, question, technical question about the motion. Uh, just to uh, give her some satisfaction about what's in it. The uh, list of the um, members are those that were elected on February twenty sixth. Um, and I am aware that there were some minor changes, but if everyone will note, the resolution itself actually says uh, that we are recognizing the results of the April twenty fourth, twenty twenty two. So it's informational purposes uh, only there. Um, so in my opinion, I don't believe there's any amendment needed. Thank you. Angela, you're on mute.
Um, next, we're going to go to Ms. Harlow's.
Um, thank you. I, I would two things I'd like to echo, Mr. Bowen. When you recognize a certain board, it implicitly means that you're also rep, you're also recognizing their successors and interests. That's just basic, and I also move to end debate on this issue.
Okay, it's been moved. At this point, thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Okay, any discussion on ending debate?
It it's a non-debate, uh, calling questions, non-debatable.
It's calling the question. Um, okay, so we're going to go to a vote. Okay, uh, Ms. Harlow, do you mind doing a roll call vote?
Uh, no problem. One moment, please. Let me just pull up my my template. Um, just so you know, um, uh, Madam Chair, and if you'd like me to change my practice, I certainly will. I generally do not call upon the chair for the vote unless there's a tie to cause or break a tie, since that's the recommended practice under Roberts. But if you'd like me to do differently, I certainly would be more than willing.
That's, that's fine. I'll I'll chime in in the end if I feel I need to.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Benner?
Uh, just point a clarification here. This is just on ending debate, correct, Madam Chair?
That's correct.
I vote yes.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes.
Mr. Bowen?
Yes.
Mr. Duque?
Yes.
Mr. Eklund? Is Mr. Eklund present?
Let me scroll through and check. Let's come back to him in the meantime.
Come back to him. Ms. Eiler?
Yes.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Hagopian?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Mr. Nana?
Yes.
Mr. Nikala? Mr. Nikala?
I'm trying to find him.
I'll come back to him. Mr. Ruffo?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Watkins?
Yes.
Going back, Mr. Eklund? If he is not present, I do believe his alternate is present, uh, Mark uh, Tunyevitz?
No.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Nikala?
I vote aye.
Okay, Madam Chair, it looks like it is fifteen in favor, one opposed.
Okay, I don't need to vote. Thank you. Okay, debate is is over. So at this point, it would be appropriate to go to a vote on the main motion, but I see Mr. Ford has his hand raised. Mr. Ford?
I'm all set.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I'm all set.
Okay, great. Um, Ms. Harlow, did you have anything else to add? I saw your hand was raised.
Oh, no, no, I don't mean to have my hand raised.
No worries. Okay, uh, the, I think that we're going to go to a vote on the main motion. It's the, it's pretty long, so I don't think that we need Mr. Bowen to repeat the whole thing verbatim, but does everyone understand what we're voting on? Because if you don't, it's totally okay. I need you to speak up.
And it is in the one note, by the way, under um, new business with previous notice.
Someone, someone had a question.
Uh, yeah, point of uh, information uh, or inquiry. I will be happy to read the resolution itself for the last paragraph, since that is actually what we're voting on.
Okay, let's, let's read that last paragraph again, just to catch everybody up.
Thank you. Be it therefore resolved that the Libertarian National Committee recognizes the results of the election at the special convention the state committee elected therein the results of the April twenty fourth, twenty twenty two Lama Regular Convention and the state committee elected therein.
Thank you. Okay, so we're about to go to a vote. Ms. Harlow, can you do another roll call vote?
I certainly can. Thank you. One moment. Mr. Uh, Mr. Benner?
Yes.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes.
Mr. Bowen?
Yes.
Mr. Duque?
Yes.
I'm just going to call on Mr. Eklund one more time, though I don't believe he is present. So, Mr. Tunyewitz?
Regretfully, yes.
Ms. Eiler?
Yes.
Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Hagopian?
Yes.
I am going to abstain. Mr. Nana?
I don't have enough chairs weighing in to make a decision. I will also abstain.
Mr. Nikala?
I vote aye.
I'm sorry?
I vote yes.
Thank you. Mr. Ruffo?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Watkins?
Yes.
Okay, Madam Chair, it's fourteen yes, zero no, two express subventions.
What's the vote threshold on this, Ms. Ms. Harlow's?
Uh, this would be a majority, ma'am.
That's what I thought. Um, okay, I I don't believe you need my vote.
Okay, so it would be fourteen, zero, three.
Excellent. Thank you all very much. The next item up on the agenda is
A motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, who made that motion, please?
Mr. Ruffo.
Oh, man, my internet totally bugged out on me when I wanted to make the vote.
I'm so sorry. That's, that's okay, though. We we uh, all got our votes in.
Okay.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to adjourn. Any, any discussion?
Um, Madam Chair, just a point of order. Um, when there is an electronic um, glitch, uh, an absent member does have the right to record a vote as long as it's within five minutes. Just for your information, Mr. Eklund, your alternate did vote yes. Um, I don't know if you wish to vote differently or just wish to record an additional vote for the record.
I would vote yes.
Okay, just one. Thank you, Mr. Eklund.
Okay, totally fair. Okay, so back to the agenda item at hand, which is adjournment. If there is no discussion, we're going to go to a vote. All in favor of adjournment?
I would vote yes.
Oh, did we want to ask if there was no objection, perhaps, Madam Chair?
Sure, we can ask that. Is there any objection? It's pretty silent. Going once, going twice. Okay, if there's no objection, I I'll just say we're adjourned.
Thank you, guys.
To note, it is six thirty four Eastern Time. Am I correct? Four thirty four Mountain.
That's correct. Okay, great. Okay.